Jack, I got you on film now too, but good evening, everybody, if we're ready to roll. I saw that, thank you. Alright, so we are recording. Nice to see everybody as always. Notice hereby giving, and this is the zoning board of appeals for December 1st, 2020. Again, good to have everyone, nice to see some people again. The first order of business is case number 20-19. Steve Law and Thomas Law in regards to... Another right one? Yeah, 23 Lennox Ave, I'm sorry. Respect the property located on 23 Lennox Ave in a general residence district. This meeting will be conducted digitally using go-to meeting. Participation may be accessed through a computer tablet or smartphone at the said site. You can also dial in using your phone at the provided phone number. This applicant requests a special permit under section 5.7.3 of the zoning bylaw to allow demolition of a current existing two-story wood frame structure, concrete block garage and shed on the subject real estate and the construction of a proposed two-story house and garage on said parcel. This application also requests a variance under the general laws of the Commonwealth to allow for a rear setback on the subject property from the required setback of 30 feet to the proposed setback of 27.9 feet. And if necessary, front setback variance from the required 20 feet to the proposed 12 feet for a front porch of said structure and an area variance from the required 10,000 square foot to the lot size of 8549 square feet. 8,549 square feet pursuant to section 10.2.2. Plans are on file for this application in the office of zoning board of appeals and may be viewed during normal business hours Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Now, Steve and Emily Law, if you guys want to unmute yourselves, that would be great. It's nice to see you guys again, and I'm glad you're back. We look forward to hopefully doing business with you. Are you... are you represented, are you not?
Yeah.
Yes, and Stephen Kenny is here.
Stephen Kenny is your lawyer?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you, Steve, nice to have you. Okay, Steve, so why don't I let you give a brief explanation of what you plan on doing? If you could just refresh everybody's memory, please.
Sure, thank you very much. Again, Stephen Kenny representing Stephen Law, Laurie Law, Thomas Law. On property located at 23 Lennox Avenue. The zoning district is the general district. I have submitted a couple of plans with the application. One being a plot plan showing the existing house location and one being a plot plan showing the proposed house location that the board may want to follow through on. As the chairman noted, we're seeking a special permit to demo the existing two-story wood frame home, concrete block garage and shed, and construct a new proposed two-story house and connected garage on the property. Also seeking variances...
Steve, I'm gonna interrupt you for a minute, please, I apologize. I'm gonna remind everybody, if you are not involved in the hearing or you are not called upon, please mute your microphone, it's an extreme distraction. Okay, everybody will be heard who wants to be heard, but Mr. Kenny has the floor. Go ahead, Mr. Kenny, thank you.
Thank you very much. Also seeking variances. Rear setback from the required 30 feet to 27.9 feet. And if necessary, a front setback from the required 20 feet to 12 feet for the front porch. In addition to that, an area variance from the required 10,000 square feet to the 8,549 square feet which the lot contains. As to the special permit. We believe that it's required as the proposed reconstruction will cause the structure to exceed the area of the original non-conforming structure and cause the structure to be located other than on the original footprint. The new proposed two-story house will be less non-conforming than the present structure. The right sideline will go from 13.4 feet to 15 feet. Left sideline from 54.3 feet to 29 feet. Rear setback from 23.7 to 27.9. And the front setback from 19.3 feet to 20 feet. Not including the front porch. The demo of the garage and the shed will vastly improve the non-conformity that appears on the lot at the present time. We believe that section 5.33 of the zoning bylaw is not applicable because the request is not increasing the non-conformity nor creating a new non-conformity. We also believe that section 5.4 is not applicable because this is not a partial reconstruction but a total reconstruction. Pursuant to section 10.4.2, the petition is submitted that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects for either the neighborhood or the town. The residential use will be beneficial to serve the housing needs of the local residences. There will not be any increase in traffic as a result of the construction of the new structure. There will not be any unusual provision of adequate utilities or other public services that would have an adverse effect. There will not be any environmental damage due to wetland loss, habitat disturbance, erosion, or damage to valuable trees or other natural assets. There will not be any preemption of land having special qualities suiting it for other uses. And there will not be any unusual parking or services areas which would have an adverse effect on the neighborhood or the town. There will be a positive fiscal impacts on the town as there will be a new residential structure with an increased value than prior. We're also seeking, as I mentioned, three variances.
Steve, let me interrupt you one more time, I apologize. Can we hold on, unless the board members want me to let it go through, why don't we hold off on the variance to see if you meet the special permit requirement, then we won't have to get into the variance if that's the case.
Okay.
Alright. So as far as the 5.3.3 and the 5.4 not being applicable, I believe that was the issue we had the last time. Was it not that it came in under the wrong section? Okay, which is good, hopefully that's been... Okay, I see your client nodding their head, which is good. Alright, so why don't I open it up to questions from the board for the time being? You know, and then we'll see where we're at at the end in terms of the special permit. We'll save a little bit of time. So, why don't I go to Mr. Riley first, if you're ready, sir? Phil, just make sure you're unmuted, sir, please.
Sorry about that. You hear me now?
Yes, sir.
It looks pretty straightforward. I don't really have any questions at this time. Obviously, they have to come to us rather than the building inspector because of the new structure occupying something other than the footprint of the old. But it looks pretty straightforward. No questions at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I think the last time they were in, I think you were correct in stating they proceeded into the wrong sections. Counsel, I think, is correct, I agree. I have no questions either.
Very well, Mr. Perry.
Today...
Just make sure you know... yeah, there you go, buddy.
Is that better?
Yes, sir, all set.
Okay, I'm sorry. And of course, when I cut to the site, I was seeing, I saw the rear setback, front setback, lot size, nothing was conforming to the zone. And then he says, "What else are we gonna do with this?" So I said, "Well, maybe if we get as close to the existing footprint." And obviously, the house needs a lot of work, there's no question about it. And the best way, I think, would be to try to get as close as you can with the existing footprint. But I'd like to see a nice new house there. But there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of issues with it. But I don't think it's right to just have the house sit there and rot. Let's take it down and put something new.
Alright, I would go to Mr. Mul... if you're all set, Jack, I'll go to Mr. Mulville next, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This is a special permit, right?
Yes, sir.
So if the application is approved for the special permit, the variance is negated?
Not yet. We're trying to see if we can get through with the special permit first, and we won't have to go the variance route.
That's what I'm saying, so, you know, we'll pass on the variances if the special permit is approved, correct?
Yes, if we get to that, yes.
Thank you.
Are you good with it? No questions here?
I just, I mean, I had some comments on the variances because of hardship. If they were gonna go down the road of a variance because of other applicants that have had to show hardship, but if the special permit prevails, then, you know, away we go.
Okay, very good. Which is exactly what I was looking for. So apparently, there's a couple of callers on the line. I just want to make sure that they are not... is anybody on the line caller one? Well, caller one is Mr. Kenny. I believe there's three other callers. Is anybody on the line to speak on behalf of this case? Whether pro or con?
I am not.
This is Frank from Avalon Building Systems. I am not.
Okay, thank you. Is there a fourth caller that's unidentified? If you're here for this case, then please be heard. If not, then no problem, we'll move on. So I'll assume not. So is there any other questions from any audience members that want to be heard in regard to this case?
Hi, this is Ceratori family on Shaw Street. We just wanted to...
Okay, do you want me to just spell your name, so the administrative assistant can just write it out for the record, please?
Sure, it's Giovana, G.I.O.V.A.N.N.A. Ceratori.
Okay, what's your address, Mr. Ceratori?
Oh, I'm just, I want to welcome them to the neighborhood. I just had, I know, I'm not sure if this is the right platform regarding the construction once it starts, because we live on Shaw Street, so and we face that house, so when we try to leave the street, obviously, sometimes there's an issue because people use it as a cut-through. Especially when they're trying to catch the train. I know with COVID now, there's not that many, but people speed up and down the street. And my question will only be, how would that construction be handled? Are they gonna park their construction vehicles on Shaw Street? Are they gonna go park on Lennox Ave? Because the street is narrow, so if we're gonna have all these vehicles, it's gonna be tough for the neighbors to exit Shaw Street.
That's a good point. I mean, I don't know if your attorney wants to speak for you, or Steve, or Emily, if you guys want to touch base on that.
This is Frank Federico from Avalon Building Systems. We're the ones that are gonna be constructing the home. It is gonna be a modular home, so there's less impact with construction, but we always park the vehicles on the property. So there won't be vehicles parked in the street.
Okay, alright, yeah, because there's a few neighbors too.
Does that help you?
Yes, it does, yeah, because currently now, there's people that park on the sidewalks of Lennox Ave. You know, whether they live here, or they, you know, they have people coming over to visit. So it's kind of, it gets tough when you're trying to pull out of Shaw, especially going down the hill versus going up when there's, you know, cars parked there. So, yeah, that should help.
Okay, great. Frank, if I could make a suggestion too, and it's just a suggestion, not a requirement, but if need be, if it's gonna be, you know, a wide load or an oversized load, if you you know, feel like you need a police detail on that particular day, that would probably help matters as well. So just this is...
Yes, I appreciate that comment. We will obviously address that, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Mr. Ceratori, any more, any other questions, or are you satisfied with that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, anybody else get to be heard on this regards? Okay, seeing none, I'll take the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, move to close the hearing.
Do I have a second? Alright, it's seconded by Mr. Riley. And it's moved, and by the way, just for the record, I do have in my possession the affidavit of the publications and the notifications as well. So just so everybody's aware of that for the record. I should have said that from the beginning, my apologies for that. So Mr. Murphy has moved to close the hearing, Mr. Riley is seconding. So I'll do a roll call vote, if you guys can just make sure you're unmuted for the roll call vote. But I'll go with Mr. Riley first. Yes, Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulville?
Yes.
Alright, and the chair is a yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the special permit.
Okay, so a motion approved by Mr. Murphy. We'll give a second to Mr. Perry. This is for the special permit. Okay, so I'll do another roll call vote, same order, of Mr. Riley. Phil, I think you still might be muted, but I'm gonna go with a yes on that. My lip reading perfection is good. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
I don't want to keep you on mute.
That's alright. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulville?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so it's a 5-0 vote to approve the special permit for the project. However, Mr. Law there, we do have to, you guys, correct me if I'm wrong here. You guys have to request to withdraw, maybe I'll have your attorney do it, but you have to request to withdraw the variance application, so we can formally vote on that as well.
We will do that.
Okay, thank you. So there's been a request by the attorney for the applicants to withdraw the variance motion. So do I have a pleasure of the board on that?
Move to accept the withdrawal of the variance.
And that is seconded. Alright, seconded by Mr. Riley. So a quick roll call vote on that, so I'll start with Mr. Riley again.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulville?
Yes.
Alright, so the motion to withdraw the variance without prejudice is approved 5-0. Steve, Emily, best of luck to you, we wish you well.
Thank you guys so much, we appreciate it.
Good luck.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alright, second case, what time is it? Yeah, we're good on time. Second case to be heard. Alright, we are, case number 20-18. It's the property located at 842-858 Boston Providence Highway in the manufacturing district. This meeting is conducted digitally using go-to meeting. Participation may be accessed through a computer, tablet, smartphone at the said site, website, rather. You can also dial in using your phone with the given telephone number. This application requests a special permit under section 3.1.5D point negative dash one of the zoning bylaw to allow the sale or storage of 97 automobiles pursuant to section 3.1.5D point minus one. So do I have... Who is representing this applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Brian Almeida for this applicant.
Alright, Brian Almeida is, Remanda, is that one of the phone calls you're talking about? There's all those, a caller I...
This is Almeida.
I had a caller forward. Go ahead, sorry.
No, I know you can't see it, Mr. Chair, but Mr. Almeida's on the screen.
Okay, I have two callers, a four and a five. If you guys could identify yourselves if possible, please.
I don't know which caller number I am, but this is Ellie Brady. I live at 28 Hillcrest Road behind the Subaru.
Okay, and the other one is who, please? See, I can't see that individually, I just want to make sure that they're not muted, or whatever the case may be. And Remanda, I'm getting your messages, but I'm not even sure if caller five is pertaining to this particular hearing. So caller five, if you know who you are, if you're on, if anybody else is on the line, if you could identify yourself, please? Okay, I'm gonna move on. Alright, so Mr. Almeida, I'm gonna give you the floor if you want to give a description as to exactly what you're trying to do, please.
Mr. Chair, do you want to read off the notice for us? Oh, you already did, I'm sorry, you already did. My apologies.
Sorry about that. Thought I'm losing my mind there, buddy, sorry about that.
No, that was me.
It's okay. Alright, Mr. Almeida, if you want to go forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I think that it's as simple as the description describes, seeking a special permit to allow the storage of 97 cars on the locus in question. I also have Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering here to address any concerns that the board has with respect to the plans of record. I'm sure that there are questions with respect to that, and he's prepared to address those with respect to the bylaws themselves. The argument is quite simple, that the special permit is requesting a use that we assert is no more detrimental than the uses that are allowed as a matter of right in this instance.
Okay, now, was there something, and I know, I know Remanda told me about this today, were you trying to take off? Am I good, do I have the right one, Remanda? Were you guys trying to take certain spaces away and then adding others to come up with the number of 97, or? Am I wrong?
Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering Company. I drew the plan.
Okay.
What, to answer your question, what we did was this, this is a triangle lot that used to have the camera company building. And that, that building has been torn down. And we're gonna combine this new lot with the existing Subaru lot. And in doing that, we're going to reconfigure the parking spaces. So in doing that, we're gonna get rid of some of the existing parking spaces on the site and then restrike the combined site to come up with the parking count that we had, so. So that's what you see on the plan, some gaining spaces and eliminating some spaces. But it's just when you, when we're gonna add another piece of land, we may not keep, because there was an angle between the property lines before, we're not gonna keep all of the old spaces, we're gonna just get rid of some of the old spaces and restrike the new spaces for net gain spaces.
Okay, but in the end, the total is gonna be 97 spaces, correct?
Um... Actually, I have to take a look at this. It was that this 97 spaces gained, but we're going to remove 28 spaces, so there are gonna be 69 spaces gained on my, on my plan. It says 97. That might have been something that I missed when I, when I looked at the application, but the 97 are what we're gaining, but then, or what, what are gonna be added, but the net gain is gonna be 69 spaces.
Okay, we'll go on to a couple, we'll go on to some questions from the board members in the line. Mr. Murphy, why don't I start with you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Almeida or Mr. Smith, which one of you wants to answer this? There is a plan that shows, it doesn't, it's the smaller of the plans that we received, the site layout and zoning plan. And it looks like there's a driveway that connects to Paula Road. That doesn't actually exist, does it? Is that just on paper?
Yes, that's, that's, that's a, that's a paper street that years ago there was a driveway through there, but to my knowledge, it's no longer used. It might be overgrown, but there's no, it's not currently being used and that would not be allowed in the future. So that is not what we're, what we're asking for, but yeah, it's just a paper right of way, but to my knowledge, the existing special permit for Clay Subaru does not allow the use of Paula Road, and that's not what we're looking for.
The actual overall exhibit plan, if you look at that, which actually has kind of a photo of the site superimposed over or under the design, does show that it's overgrown. I was just curious based upon the, because the first one I saw was the site layout and zoning plan, and I didn't think that that would be appropriate for this application, that you'd be trying to connect Paula Road back up to the back up to the site, and you're saying you're not doing that?
No, sir, that's not, that's not at all part of the application, and we did the overall exhibit plan to give the board a sense of, of what the total site is gonna look like when it's all done. But no, there's no application to use Paula Road.
And so basically, the new, the new spaces you're adding look like they're for the most part are going to be in that triangle lot where the camera place used to be?
Yes, that's right. We're not, we're not doing anything on the north side of the Subaru building. It will all be where the, where the camera company used to be. And a little bit, if you look at the plan that says service area, just below that, where it says service area, there's some dark lines, so that's where we're gonna reconfigure the striping. If you look closely, there are some light dashed lines. The light dashed lines are the existing striping, and the dark lines are what we propose. But all, all the proposed work is near that little triangle area, not anything north of the Subaru building.
I can see that, so you're eliminating a lot of the spaces that are in that area and kind of moving them, I guess you're saying northward, right? North, yeah, they're going kind of north-south instead of it's in the other direction, I can see. They were along, they were along the old property line with the camera store, a lot of those spaces, and those spaces are all gonna be gone now, right?
Yes, yes, they were, they went along the property line, so it kind of went up as an angle. Now that Clay owns both properties, you can see, we kind of made it to, well, we did make it two aisles perpendicular to Route 1.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Riley, if you want to go next, please. Phil, just double check that mute, if you could.
Alright, I don't know why I keep muting, I'm not, I'm not doing that.
It's alright.
I guess it doesn't want to hear. Maybe the machine doesn't want to hear from me, I don't blame them. Just looking at the plan, it looks as if the, the new area is somewhat different from where I thought it was when I visited the area today. So if I understand what you're saying, the the new, the new parking is right along the service area and the places that are shown in dashes, the light dashes are the ones being eliminated, and the ones that are dark are the ones being added, is that right?
Yes.
So it's all really in that service area?
Yes.
That's correct. The reason I was a little bit confused, I went there today and drove around the building and, you know, passed that service area and continued on, and there seemed to be an area further on that actually was near where the the ZVA sign was. It appeared to be another area that had cars that I thought was the appropriate one, but I think I understand what you're doing now, the descriptions of that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Mulville, do you have any comment on it, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Matt, good to see you and Merry Christmas. The two questions, actually, two questions and a couple of comments. The owner summary says it's an old Subaru and 5... Uh, the owner summary says it's Norwood Subaru and Five Hundred Commercial LLC. Is that the Clay family, or does Mr. Bach own this property now?
Uh, this is the Clay family. My, my, my client is Scott Clay.
And he owns the Subaru facility, and he bought the camera company?
Yes.
But there are two different, two different legal names for ownership. Are they gonna be combined, or is that a technicality?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, Mr. Mulvihill. I know that they just bought it in two entities, but I would imagine they would combine it in the future.
Well, that's fine. It's more curiosity than anything else.
Sure. No, this is all.
I can actually address that, Mr. Mulvihill. Yeah, it was just a, um, I would describe it as a technicality. It was discovered that, we actually thought that they were owned by the same entity, and it turned out that they were not. So the application was amended to reflect both entities, just to, for the sake of clarity, but it's all the same, other than that.
Okay. Again, that's legal. That's, that's fine. It's about my pay grade. The, the, Matt, were you involved with Bill DeCarlo when he came in and did the building over?
I was years ago, yes, I, I was. Well, actually, let me say that. You know, we, we've all been, or I can speak myself, I've been here a long time. I think we did some work maybe twenty years ago, but I think the recent upgrade was done by another firm. I think TMA did it most recently, but if I can, I might be able to answer any questions you have just by being familiar with the site.
Well, yeah, no, this one was, this one was twenty years ago, and you remember, I remember it vividly. Um, there was a lot of neighborhood input on the property, and we had a landscaping plan that Bill had to adhere to. And, you know, we reviewed it periodically on the back portion to use the buffer against the neighborhood to the back there. And I, I'm just, I want to clarify, you're not adding more spaces at all, and I could read the plan, but I just need it on the record. You're not adding more spaces on the back property near the buffer zone or impeding on the buffer zone, are you?
Yes, that's correct. We are not changing the existing pavement at all in that area.
Okay. Secondly, when we did the plan over twenty-some-odd years ago, Mr. Easie was the board liaison to Subaru to make sure that Mr. DeCarlo held up his end of the bargain for the trees that were up there, and the, I don't know what you put in the woods there. I think they were blue Bruce or something or other. They're very good buffers, um, you know, during the season, but in the, in the off-season, obviously, the houses can see the highway and so forth and so on. Um, I did drive by the property, and I noticed there are some dead trees in there. Is there any way, Matt, that we could get the applicant to plant some more trees in there where there ever is a bald spot and have Mr. Easie reengage with you to, to make sure that the, the quote-unquote bald spots are filled in?
Uh, yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. I, I'm sure Mr. Clay would, would be willing to do that. Certainly is our intent to maintain that buffer, and if there's some, and if there's some planting that needs to be done, that would be, I think it's a good idea, and it's a good idea to have a board member as a liaison, and uh, you know, all I can think of is if there's some, you know, it, just so there could be maybe a little bit of discussion as to what type of tree is, is, is there, and, and of course, it would be by board approval. Uh, but I think, I think he would be very agreeable to doing some more planting back there.
Yeah, because I, I, I won't get too much in the weeds with it, but Paul was the, the liaison, and Ramonda can pull the minutes of the meeting, and I know that he, I remember it vividly because the neighborhoods were, the neighbors were very involved in this. I just don't know how many need to be planted, where they need to be planted, but I'll, I'll defer to the minutes in the decision twenty-some-odd years ago, and we'll take it from there. And then with Mr. DeCarlo no longer involved in it, I'm assuming that the, 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 the decision of the board follows the new owner, meaning the Clay family, and they have to follow the same rules. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I would, I believe that's the case. Alan can talk on that, and I, I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense. I can't imagine that Mr. Clay would have any objections.
That's all. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I know the neighbors don't want to speak on this, but, uh, yeah, that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, you're welcome. Before we get, before we get to Mr. Perry, I think, just to emphasize on Mr. Mulvihill's point, I think that would hopefully satisfy at least some of the concerns of the neighbors that I'm sure we're gonna hear from, but, so I'm glad we addressed that. But moving forward, Mr. Perry, if you want to touch on this, please.
Okay, we have a little trouble here. I know it's a part, partial layout of the whole site that's there now. And I imagine the north end is just gonna be still inventory and no workers going on up there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Because basically, all you're doing is just refiguring the, I guess they're gonna be all inventory spaces, basically. And that's about it. It's pretty simple.
Yes, that's, that's our intent.
No, I think the questions have been asked. It's a simple one because it's an existing building and not doing anything to it, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, Ramonda, I can't see what callers we have, but if you want to go to, hold on. All right, caller five. Caller five, did you want to be heard on this case? If you even know who it is. I, I know we have, we have a number six seventy-five as well. And don't forget, if you're trying to speak, don't forget to unmute yourself. So six seventy-five, do you want to be heard?
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Yes. I'm Robert Harkins. I'm in a butter of the Subaru property. I'd like to be heard when appropriate. Thank you.
Absolutely, Robert. Thank you. Will you want it, will you, just for identification purposes, were you number five, or were you six seventy-five, or?
Not that I am.
All right, you know what? Don't, don't even worry.
Mr. Harkins shows up on the screen.
Okay, okay. No, no worries, Mr. Harkins. Go ahead and do me a favor. Just give me your address if you could, please.
Yes, my name's Robert Harkins, H-A-R-K-I-N-S, and I'm at fifteen Hillcrest Road. And I've been in a butter to the Subaru property since nineteen ninety-four. Um, during that time, Norwood Subaru has been very good neighbors. I have no, no issue with that. The only issue I have is over recent years with the increased use of the key fob alarms for employees to find vehicles in the lot, to find a specific vehicle. They'll set off the, the car alarm on the key fob in order to find the, the car. So we get car alarms going off all day. My biggest concern is with the addition of more cars in the lot, that that will, the, the car alarms will get worse. Um, so I'm, I'm, I guess I'm coming before the board to just look for some guidance on going forward, on how to address this issue, um, whether it be terms of the condition of issuing the permit or whatever. Uh, thank you.
Okay, does, uh, does the attorney want to follow up on that?
To be honest, Mr. Chair, I didn't know that that was a problem, but hearing that it's a, I'm sure that my client wants to address it. Um, so we certainly submit to the judgment of the board as to how to address that with respect to conditions. But, you know, with respect to this application before you, I would just suggest that the addition of these vehicles is, at least from first glance, unlikely to increase the problem by a substantial magnitude, but we absolutely do want to address it if it is an issue.
Okay. No, I think we, we can handle it once we're, once we're finished. It, no problem. We can, we can handle that. We'll, we'll touch upon that, though, Mr. Harkins. It's definitely taken with, with all due respect, certainly. Is there anything else you wanted to add before I went on to the next caller?
No, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there, is there another caller on this case who wants to be heard?
Hello, I'm Sylvina Giarin on two twenty East across street. Uh, please, I just want to make sure, like, when, during construction, like, you're gonna be using only Route One. Like, you're not gonna be able to use anything, like, only you, only Route One, please. So if you go to your property, uh, like, because we're already having some problem with our east across street. We're having big trucks passing by, and the road, just have the road paved, newly paved, and we already start having some, like, you know, like, it looks like a little bit like older than two months, really. So just I make sure, please, you're gonna be using only Route One for the construction.
Okay, so if I heard you right, you just want to make sure all construction traffic goes in and out on Route One?
Yes, please.
Okay. Brian, do you want to touch on that? I mean, I don't know if, if, you know, the manager of the project wants to touch on that. How much construction is there?
We, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, we, uh, we, we anticipate all the access, construction access will be off of Route One, on and off of Route One. So we're willing to commit to that, and if the board feels they would like to make that a condition, that would be something we would be totally agreeable with.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, Matt, I actually should have addressed you on that, so sorry about that. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No problems. No, no, no problems.
Uh, I'm actually looking at the, do I have another call? Any other callers that want to be heard on this case?
Mr. Chairman.
Dave, I got you. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, it's Michelle Martino. I'm at twenty-seven Hillcrest Road. I, I want to, um, agree with Mr. Harkins when he said Clay Subaru's been a wonderful neighbor. We've been here for fifteen years. Um, and any concern we've had, they have addressed. Um, however, one concern that continues to happen again and again is when they get deliveries. Um, mostly in the overnight hours, the car carriers come to the back of the property and unload. With an additional sixty-nine spaces, that would mean more deliveries of cars. The delivery is very, very loud, especially in the wintertime. I think we're one of the neighbors has, who has a smaller buffer than any of the others. It wakes up my house, especially my daughter, whose bedroom is in the back of the house. And then you also, on occasion, have, um, if there's more than one driver, they're talking, and it just goes through the, the woods, and, and I respectfully ask that they continue to make the drivers aware to park in the front of the building when they unload. At times, we've had the car carriers unloading and idling, or when they're, before they unload, idling for hours on end. The other thing is during the day, when their cars are being shown, there often ends up being people walking the back of the lot. And where we are, it's that single lot, uh, single line of cars that are right, uh, budding the trees. If it's the workers, a lot of times, the language they use as they're walking through there is not very appropriate, and they're very loud. Um, after hours, I guess our biggest concern is the unloading of the cars and more cars being into the property.
All right, Matt, clearly a valid issue. So is it feasible to, I don't even know so much as required, but I mean, if we have to, we will, but is it, is it feasible to request that the unloading take, take place in the front of the building? Matt Smith?
Sure, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I think, I think it's something that, that makes a lot of sense. It, it might be, it probably be on the, on the side, on the north side, but a lot farther away from the, from the, from the neighbors. Uh, but that, that is something that I, that I, I would ask to, I think I would have to ask Scott Clay how he feels about that. I, I would imagine he would be agreeable to it, but I, I don't know operations of, of, of that. So unfortunately, I don't think that's something that I can commit to tonight. I think it's a good idea, but, but I can't commit to that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Without, only because I, only because I need to talk to Scott about that. That's all. I'm not being argumentative or stonewalling at all, but.
No, no, I, I'm all right with that. I see, I see. I understand that. But what do you got, Mr. Mulvihill? What do you have?
Completely unenforceable. Um, it's an ongoing issue on Route One. All the dealers are unloading on Route One. Chevrolet unloads on Pleasant Street. There's traffic issues. When Vesma Buick was engaged, they would unload on the Quonset in the back. Um, you know, when we would say, whenever they came in, when it went from, God, when it went from, I don't want to go way back to Mac Moran, but when it was Tom Chevrolet, um, we went and they came in front of us to, to, to change signage or something or other, and I'd have to take a look at the minutes and the decisions, but we always said you gotta unload on the property, blah, 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 blah. It never gets enforced. Uh, the neighbors have to, you know, take time out of their day to call the police, and then the police come down because all these delivery drivers are from out of state. They have no idea. They don't know Norwood's bylaws. They don't know Norwood's rules, and Mrs. Martino's comments are absolutely spot on, which now lends me larger credence to my comment regarding the buffer, Matt, that, you know, I think I'm gonna have to talk to, to Paul to really thicken that. Not that it would, you know, alleviate the problem, but it might help, you know, you know, somewhat um, to really thicken up that backyard buffer in some capacity.
Yeah, I, I think it's something that, that's reasonable, and, and I think it's something that we can, we can work out, and I, I think it would be, it would help the situation. Uh, you know, I, I certainly, uh, feel that, I think it's Mrs. Martino. I think she was, she, she was very spot on in what she said, and, and some of the things that she said that was happening, especially hearing bad language, uh, when she's in a home with her family. That's, that's just something that's terrible and obviously uncalled for. So uh, we certainly would like to do what we can to help the situation.
Even, even a minor suggestion is, is, as minor as it is, it may be having a contact person there. If Mrs. Martino could get somebody's cellphone, if there is an issue to be brought up, you know, maybe she can bring it directly to somebody there. It doesn't sound like it's a, you know, a constant repetitive problem, but it does sound like a problem. You know, I mean, the language, stuff like that, some of the stuff's unavoidable. I get that, but, I mean, in fairness to the neighbors, which it sounds like you guys have been fair over the years, uh, obviously, everything's communication. So if you want to keep the communication open, that could be a suggestion as well. So let me, let me, I'm gonna move on to Mr. Haja, who has a comment as well. But Michelle, I'll get back to you in a minute in regards to possibly touching on the buffer zone expansion that Mr. Mulvihill talked about. But prior to that, if I could hear from Mr. Haja first.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's give your address for the record, if you could.
Sure, Chatham Road in Norwood Town Meeting Member, meeting member from District Four. Um, just a, a couple of clarifications, because I just want it from me stated. Packy touched on other parts of parcel B. So can we just get, for the record, that, because parcel B is kind of large, except for the south of the service area, there are no other scheduled parking arrangement changes to parcel B.
Matt, just make sure you're not, I see you answered, but just make sure you're not muted there. Thank you.
Yes, I think, yes, that's correct. We, we propose nothing, um, to the north side of the building. Everything is to the south side of the building. If you're, when you're looking at the building, all the work is gonna be to the left of the building, none, I'm sorry, scratch that. All the work will be to the right of the building. No work to be the left of the building.
Gotcha. Just want to make sure. Um, second is, I, I know there's been suggestions of whether it's ninety-seven or sixty-nine spaces, but again, just for the record, that we're on agreement, the But again, just for the record that we're on agreement, the, the plan that was submitted shows an addition of just 69 spaces. There was 97, but there's 28 being deleted for aisle space. So the total net add is 69, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Third is has the fire department reviewed this plan to make sure that access throughout that lot is, is feasible? Based on the plan that's.
Sure. The fire department has not reviewed the plan. I have designed it so that they can circulate through, but I do want to let the board know that we need to go to planning board site plan approval for this project. And I've already discussed a project with Paul Halkiotis, town planner and Matt Walsh, building inspector. So we will be going through the town department head meetings and planning board for this. But we can't go forward with those site plan designs until we get approval for the use. So because we know that we need to go through that process. It certainly could be, it could be a condition that this project can't go forward until we go through that site plan approval. And at that time, it will be meeting with the, the fire department and all other town departments.
That's great. Thank you, Matt. And the last, just to back up with the neighbor said about trucks going on the, the south side or the, or the backside is, I, I don't know, you could include a larger directional in or verbiage signs that tell them when they enter that site, go left. I mean, I wouldn't say small signs. I would say larger signs to get their attention when they're trying to come in. Since most of them are out of town, drivers, they are going to be looking for where to go. And if they see a large enough sign that tells them go left and not straight. They'll get, they'll probably follow it since it's going to be in their face. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Dave. Thanks for your input. Packy, can we go back one second just on that buffer zone? Can you elaborate a little bit on that? If we need to implement it, we will.
Well, and I have to, you have to remind you before the minutes of the 90, I don't know, Matty, what, what year do you think you came in on the initial one? It's 20, it's 2020. Was it 2000 you came in when Bill did the building over and expanded the parking lot?
Yeah, that, that, that sounds about right. I, I can, I was looking through my folders here. I, I don't have it right here, but I would say I would, my, my gut tells me it was about 2000.
Yeah. And there was plantings and we were really involved. We were really involved in the landscape, Tom. And it was one of such that, you know, the board decided to designate a member. And Paul being, I don't know, there was a junior member, associate at the time, I have no idea, but he volunteered. And to Mr. De Carlo's credit, he was, as the neighbors have said, he was a good neighbor. And I did drive by there periodically and the, I don't even know the species of tree, Matty, that's in the woods there. But they look like blue spruce or pine or whatever, but they grew up pretty good. And a couple died and he always replaced when they died. But I did drive by there when, when I got the notice. And there is a couple of bald spots and some dead trees in there that I know could use a good pruning and replanting to re, reengage that buffer to make it nice and thick. Because again, during the summer, you can't see the building. You know, when it's fully foliage with the trees and the, and the leaves and such, but in the fall, it's pretty barren. You can see people's backyards and they can see what's going on. And I, I know it's a tough situation with those fobs too, the fobs.
I, I think it makes a lot of sense.
And Packy to support this, this is Joshua Allen over at 126 Westview. So I'm right at that little corner spot that you can see at the bottom of the map.
Were you Dick's son?
I'm his grandson. Yes.
Grandson, yeah. He was, your grandfather was very engaged.
I know he was. I know he was.
He was a good guy.
I feel like I have some of the files somewhere in this house from, from that, whatever that time period was. But to your, to your statement about just the, the upkeep, both in terms of trees that have either died or trees that have outgrown. I know about two years ago, I did have to go back there and just trim some down because they were starting to hit the house. In terms of that dynamic and there's other ones to your point that are no longer standing just due to weather and life. So I think that would be an important part of this. That would definitely make a difference for, for my spot. And I'm sure some of the other folks have spoken up as well.
That wasn't order of conditions, Tom, now that I really remember it. I, I really think it was and Remanda will pull, I'll chat with Remanda tomorrow. But yeah, so that's it.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this? All right. So seeing none. Pat, do you want to wait? Do you want to wait on a vote before you, so you can hear? I mean, I don't see it being a problem, Matt, frankly, but I think, Pat, do you want anything specific from Remanda before we vote on this? Are you comfortable moving?
No, I, I, again, I think it was in the minutes and I, I'm almost positive it was in there because I remember Paul was the designate. And Bill never had a problem replanting. And I'm sure Scott, the Clay family is a reputable family. And, and they'll hold up to the terms of the landscape design and it might cost them a couple of bucks. But again, it's, you know, part of being a good business neighbor with a residential neighbor would be in your neighbor. So yeah, I don't think there's anything. I'm, I'm more concerned about the fobs. I don't know what kind of plan that could be devised on that end. Jackie might want to chime in. This Jack Perry with the, you know, the relationship you've got. Or actually, Mr. Kat Nice, if you're, and Tom, if you give me a little latitude, Mr. Kat Nice, if you're, you're on the, on the meeting right now. How do you handle it down at your dealership? Your salespeople run out with the, the alarm to try and find the, the car? And is it an issue? I know you don't water any homes down there at Central Chrysler, but what is, what is your experience?
You don't really have any abudders. We're all around woods. So any noise we make, we never get any complaints.
Would you, would you care to make a recommendation? How would, how would something like this be enforced, Peter? And again, Tom, I'm sorry if I'm stepping on your toes here, but I just, you know.
I'm all right. I'm, I'm with you.
You know, wondering if it's something that, you know, you've seen other dealerships wrestle with.
You know, I can't really always just blame the dealers either. A lot of times the service customers go out there looking for their car too. And, you know, you go to a mall sometimes and you're walking around the mall, you hear a lot of horns going off because people are always looking for their car and they don't even know where they park it. So you can't blame it all on the dealership either. Sometimes the service customers don't know where the cars are and they're out there pushing the alarms too. Little defense.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, again, I, I'll leave it. I, I, listen, I being, I know it's a problem. Because I know Mr. Harkins has talked to me privately about it. So, you know, it's not like he's making it up, but you know, again, I don't know how the board wants to handle something like that if they want to involve a, some sort of remedy on this with the decision.
Well, let's go back to, let's go back to Matt for a minute. Matt, you, can you take care of the tree issue?
Yeah, I, I, I think it makes sense. And if it is, and I, I, I believe that, that it is a condition of the previous special permit. And one thought I had was we could have a vote tonight to say that, that this current applicant shall conform with the special permit that was granted for the whole site regarding replacement of, of trees. And I'm sure there's something in there that says that dead trees shall be replaced and we would be agreeable to. And I think it makes sense to have a, a condition that says that that needs to be done. And I think just as a matter of process, it has to be done because the, 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 the big site is enabled to store cars based on that special permit that was issued years ago. And they have to conform with the conditions of that special permit. So maybe it would make sense to, to, I think, I think we would like to have a vote tonight if the, if the board is comfortable. And we would be agreeable to a condition that says that we have to adhere to the condition that is in the other decision and, and, and maybe cut and paste and put a, put a copy of that condition into this decision.
All right. Tell you what, Matt. Go ahead, Brian. What do you got?
I just wanted to say that during the interim of this hearing, I took a look at our records that I can access online. And it appears that it was a 2005 decision and there was an order of conditions.
Yeah, okay.
Or at least that there's.
Which I don't have in front of me, unfortunately.
Certainly. And I don't have a copy of the decision either. I just have documents referencing an order of conditions from 2005 related to the site.
All right. I tell you what, let's, 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 let's wrap it up here. And we'll go with preferred that it's all right in agreement with the board. That we'll go with all of the previous recommendations from the original special permit. And we will add in unless it becomes redundant because none of us have the decision in front of us that all dead trees will be replaced and any, and new trees will be put up in the quote unquote bald areas. Just to create a little bit more of a buffer to satisfy the neighbors with the noise level. And Matt, whatever you can do to, I know it's unenforceable. Unfortunately, it puts a little bit of pressure on the cops. But whatever you can do to try to keep the limitations of delivery to the front of the building as opposed to the rear. And obviously with a, you know, consideration of what time of day it is too.
Yes, yes, we will. I will pass that along very strongly. Yes.
All right. Is there anybody else who wants to add to this before we move?
Just, just to make sure I'm clear too. So does that, that include any of the overgrowth that starts to hit homes for some of those trees that have come from that area? Or is that simply for spots that no longer have growth or, or trees that have fallen?
Well, I would say. I mean, Brian and Phil might chime in being the lawyers here. I, I would say as a matter of law, Josh, you've got air rights over the fence. And if it's my tree that hangs over your fence, you can clip it right at the fence line. Brian, Phil, am I wrong? I mean, I don't know. Is it, that's a good question. I mean, is it, is it something that the order of conditions handles? The grooming? I, I, I don't think it referenced that.
I, I don't, I happen to know for a fact that the tree falls on somebody else's property. It's the problem of the homeowner where the tree falls. So Josh, if you want me to turn here and tell you unofficially have added, if the thing goes over the fence, be my guest.
Thank you.
I'm sure no one's going to have an objection to it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just chime in real quick about the noise? This is Chanley Salvucci. I'm at 122 Westview Drive. I don't know if, you know, you mentioned the cops monitoring the delivery trucks and so forth. Is there any way we can or talk to the dealership about the dumpster? Emptying of the dumpsters at 4:35 o'clock in the morning that sounds like bombs going off? Is there anybody that can monitor that or is that waste management? Or could we have the dumpster pad moved?
Well, I'm not sure it has anything to do with this hearing. It's certainly a relevant issue.
I didn't know if the dumpster pad on the plan was something, is that's always where it's been or if that's where it's being moved to?
No, I, I've heard that complaint many times in the past. It's a, that's definitely a relevant complaint. But Matt, what's the deal with that? Can that be moved away from the residence? Or is there a possibility of that or?
It's, it's, it's where it's been. Again, it's, it's, it's a, what I'm hearing tonight is, is a problem that, that shouldn't have happened. And I will, I will talk to Scott Clay and tell him that there's been some issues with the neighbors and, and see what we can do to have that helped. And I like your idea of a liaison, a person assigned at Clay that can at least talk to the neighbors. I mean, we've all been through situations where you have a problem and you make a call and you don't know who to talk to. So I think that's something else that I will suggest to Scott that the, that there's a designated person and you have the person's phone number. And you can talk to them and at least have a dialogue. I think, I think that would make a lot of sense.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, let me, at, at, at risk of getting killed by, by unsung hero administrative assistant, why don't we do this? We have the names and addresses of the people who have weighed in on this tonight. Why don't I ask the individuals, if interested, to call Remanda tomorrow and either speak live or leave a message with your telephone number. And then Mr. Smith can call at some point and retrieve those addresses and phone numbers of people that are interested if there are issues in the future. And Mr. Smith, in the meantime, you and Mr. Clay come up with a liaison of people that are going to deal with the neighborhood issues and address them properly, please.
Yes.
And anybody can do that, like, anybody can do that by, anybody who's interested in doing that, Michelle as well. Especially you can call the town hall, 781-762-1240. Just ask for the zoning board. If she's not there, just leave your name, address and telephone number, best contact number. Mr. Smith, if you can retrieve those from Remanda sometime in the very near future, come up with a liaison. And then you can contact everybody or the liaison can contact everybody. And you can be, you can eliminate the middle people with, with any issues. They can deal with that individual directly.
Yes, we'll do.
Okay.
At 28 Hillcrest Road, I just wanted to say that I was also calling about the dumpsters. If there was an opportunity to sneak it in. So I thank Chanley for bringing it up.
Okay, definitely going to be addressed with Mr. Smith. And if you want to call tomorrow as well, like I said, you can eliminate, you can eliminate the middle people, which would be us at the moment. But it did, you know, he'll have, you got, he will reach out to each one of you people who touches base with Remanda and gives their contact information. And he, you guys will know who the contact person is there to address any issues going forward. But we will have, we will, and I will propose that in a minute with, if we're going to move to a vote. That we do, we, we definitely will deal with the, the dead tree replacement and the new, new trees put up in the bald areas. As far as the, I'm going to have to cut that off, Joshua. I apologize for that. But anything that comes over your fence, that's your, that's technically your property at that point in time, I believe. Don't quote me on that. But if you cut it down, I don't think you're going to get any objection from the, from the dealership on that. So if you want to maintain your own property, feel free to do so like you've been doing. I feel comfortable going on and advising you of that. Okay. So if nobody else has anything to add, I will look for a motion from the board in regards to approving the special permit with the stipulations that all dead trees will be replaced at any point in time that need be. And any new, and some new trees will be put up in the bald areas to help the buffer zone between the dealership and the residents of the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Should we close the hearing first?
Yes, that's, that's, I'm just making the suggestion. We'll close the hearing and, yeah, okay. Yep.
Second.
So the motion to close by Mr. Riley, seconded by Mr. Murphy. All those in favor, I'll go roll call. Mr. Murphy in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Malville?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
All right. I'm a yes as well. I was just trying to get it all on the table as to what we were proposing before we closed the hearing. But anyway, so with those proposals in mind, if someone wants to make a move to, to, do I have a move, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might real quickly to, to Matt and to Brian. Could you convey to Scott, Mr. Harkins' concerns about the fobs and obviously the dumpsters? I don't know, you know, what can be done, but maybe you can meet with the neighbors or have a representative, like you said, a liaison. If somebody can discuss, you know, what the issues are back there. So it's out of our hands.
Yes, I will. I will. I, I have a, I have a list of the concerns and I will bring that to Scott's attention and facilitate a meeting with a liaison. Yep.
Thank you.
And I think we, I think we've, I think we've touched upon that too in regards to the neighbors. Whoever's interested is going to contact Remanda tomorrow with names, addresses and contact numbers. Mr. Smith is going to retrieve that from her at some point in the very near future, hopefully within a week. And then they will all, Mr. Smith or whoever, whoever the chosen liaison is will contact the neighbors. And they will have a direct line of communication, eliminating the middle people, which would be us.
That being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is motion to approve seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Murphy. All those in favor, I'll go Mr. Murphy first.
Yes.
Mr. Malville?
Yes.
Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Yeah, and uh, my, my voters are yes as well, but just uh, for the record, it is, it is with the stipulations that dead trees will be replaced upon necessary and new trees will be put up in the bald areas to help the buffer zone. And uh, good luck to everybody involved and thank you for your input.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Have a good holiday, everyone. Thank you.
You too, Matt. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, so the last hearing is case number twenty twenty. Good luck if it's anything like the year. With respect to with the rest of the property located at three forty-seven Everett Street in the limited manufacturing district. This meeting will be conducted digitally using GoToMeeting. Participation will be accessed through a computer, tablet, smartphone at the said meeting site. And you can also use, uh, you can also dial in by using your phone at the said given telephone numbers. This application requests a special permit under section five point two and mass general law. I believe the A stands for applicable, although, correct me if I'm wrong there, lawyers. Chapter forty-eight, section six of the zoning bylaw to allow for the modification of an existing special permit granted in case number eighteen dash twenty-five or in the alternative for an extension of the pre-existing non-conforming use by replacing outdoor storage of farming, snow plowing and other heavy equipment along with outdoor storage of mulch, gravel and cut wood with outdoor storage of new automobiles. So I do have something to ask and say, but I'm gonna go to, who's Mr. Cantonese's lawyer? Is that you too, Brian?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
All right, why don't you elaborate a little on, on exactly what you're looking for, then I'll address something that I have an issue with. Go ahead.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a special permit application that is uh, very nearly identical to one that was before the board, um, subject to a decision dated March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Um, in that special permit application, it was sought to have two hundred cars worth of outdoor storage. Um, and as the application that you read sits forth, the that special permit and this special permit are seeking a ex- extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use with respect to outdoor storage of tractors, trucks, firewood, loam and manure amongst the other items that you mentioned. Um, instead seeking to store automobiles, the argument being then and now that the use of storing automobiles is less detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming use that I just described. Um, and I, I suppose that's really the crux of it.
Okay, let me ask a quick question.
Now. Certainly.
Part of the, part of the complaints, from what I'm being led to believe and informed, part of the complaints is the unsightly view of the uh, of the lot at the current time, especially with the cars in there. Um, it was, it was also brought to my attention that I'm not sure even, did the cars even uh, were the cars even supposed to be, I, let me, let me step, let me take a step back. Was there not an agreed, uh, agreed upon agreement in the uh, in the previous permit in regards to a fence that should have gone up surrounding the property?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and is there a reason it's not up yet?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, beyond the delays with respect to the pandemic and the delays with respect to getting the person who's setting up the fence to put up the fence, uh, no. Um, but I, I spoke to my client about this issue today. Um, the installation of the fences imminent and we're certainly willing to be subjected to the same condition and um, certainly we're aware of that concern and, and want to address it as swiftly as possible.
All right, I tell you what, Brian, let's, let's, let's call a spade a spade here. And I don't mean to bust your chops or Mr. Cantonese by any means, with all due respect. This case is eighteen dash twenty-five originally, which means two thousand and eighteen. There wasn't a pandemic until March of twenty twenty. So I'm gonna ask you again, how come the fence isn't up?
I can answer that.
Again, I spoke to my client.
Uh, quite frankly, I know it's a rhetorical question. If the fence was up, we wouldn't have complaints about the unsightly uh, situation we have up there in, in their opinion. And uh, we probably go ahead, Peter.
So the original agreement was to clean the land. It took us a lot more to clean up that mess than a year. So we couldn't put the fence up with the size of the trucks that were going in and out of there, removing all the fill and the equipment. The cars are not unsightly. I don't know who's complaining and saying that's an unsightly view. They're all brand new cars. They're a hundred and fifty feet from the street. This isn't like driving by Foster Brothers and looking at cement trucks and tractor trailers. These are brand new cars and they're parked in a row away from the street. So anybody that complains and says they're ugly, I don't know why. But the fence has been ordered. The fence should be up within the next sixty to ninety days. But there was a lot more work to do up there than just remove loam. We had a lot of material up there that had to be leveled and taken out of there and it took a lot more time. So to put the fence up, we would have never been able to get the size of the trucks in and out of there that we needed to do that with.
All right, Peter, I tell you what, your, uh, your answer absolutely makes sense. And I, I do remember seeing that site prior to you doing any work up there. And I can certainly concur that it was a disaster that you walked into. Uh, so I will say thank you very much for answering my question because uh, I probably should have thought it out a little more as well, but that definitely, that definitely explains a lot. So you did touch on exactly what I was looking for next. You said the fence is most likely gonna be up in a six, in the next sixty to ninety days. Uh, I tell you what, I, 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 I am gonna hold you to that. Okay, so I will put a stipulation that I do, uh, and there is a cutoff date, is there not? Ramonda, help me out. And this is only for technical purposes. This is again, not to uh, force your hand, but is there, isn't it, doesn't it have to be up by the, I don't know what the date of two thousand and eighteen this came in, it's or, or what's the limitation on the fence needs to be up for the last special permit? Does anybody have that information? Okay, I'm being told April fifteenth to twenty twenty-one. So Peter, can I, uh, I'm gonna trust you that, that we can get that up by April fifteenth to twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, all right, so with that, and again, thank you for your explanation. It certainly opened my eyes and reminded me of uh, of what you walked into. So thank you very much. Um, so if we, and Ramonda, you can take that down if you could, please. And I'll go on to uh, questions from the board. So why don't I start with uh, Mr. Murphy, if you could, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, is this proposal to change the use from storing mulch and outdoor farming, snow plowing, heavy equipment to storing cars? You're, you're saying there are cars there now?
Correct, subject to the special permit.
I'm sorry. Mr. Omea, I'm sorry I didn't catch that.
Yeah, absolutely. There are, subject to the special permit from two thousand and nineteen, there was allowed two hundred cars and, and this application just to increase that number to six hundred, but making reference to the um, prior non-conforming use that was being um, extended based on the two thousand and nineteen special permit again in today's application.
So the, the special permit we, in two thousand and twenty, um, which I think we have a, I think I have a copy of here, said that you could change it from storing mulch and things like that, like equipment, to storing two hundred cars. And so that we allowed, this, this board allowed the change of the non-conforming use at that time?
Correct.
And you're asking us to change the new non-conforming use, which is storing two hundred cars, to storing six hundred cars, correct?
Correct.
And your, your claim is that that's, that's um, not more detrimental? Six hundred cars is not more detrimental than two hundred cars?
No, uh, in fairness, I think my argument is that we're looking back at the prior non-conforming use with respect to the uh, two thousand and nineteen application with respect to the uh, description that the chairman gave from the application with respect to mulch and et cetera.
Yeah, but that's already been modified. That's already been changed. We, we already allowed you to store cars, two hundred cars there. Claiming, agreeing with you, I guess. I wasn't, I don't think I was there for that one, but agreeing that, you know, it was a less detrimental than having, you know, mulch and plows and things like that. But you're saying now we're talking about a non-conforming use that's storing two hundred cars, correct? You know, we're not talking about storing farm equipment and all the other stuff that's listed. And, but you know, five point two says that you to change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use that is not more detrimental to the character of the district which is located. And that's, so you're asking us to say that six hundred cars is not more detrimental than four hundred cars, not two hundred cars? Cause that's what you have now. That we've allowed that by a special permit.
And you're suggesting that as a result, looking back at what was there before two thousand and nineteen is inapplicable?
I mean, why, why, why would it be? We've already changed it. We've already allowed, the non-conforming use is now two hundred cars.
But still. Well, I, I think, I think a fair reading of certainly, but I think a fair reading of, of the the case law with respect to extending a non-conforming use is with respect to extending it, not necessarily extinguishing the old non-conforming use. I think that's what the crux of it is, is that we're not necessarily saying that we're looking to I, I certainly understand your point that if, if we were looking to say that six hundred cars isn't more detrimental than two hundred, that would be a tougher argument to make, but I don't think that's necessarily the argument that we're making or that we have to make. I think that our argument is that there's, was a prior non-conforming use. We extended it. We didn't necessarily eliminate. Now we're looking to extend it a slight bit further. And that that extension, that slight extension from the two thousand and nineteen application to this one is not substantially more detrimental.
You'd, I don't think you extended. I, I was reading the decision. You, you didn't extend it. You actually changed the non-conforming use to store cars there. I mean, I, I, that's, that's pretty clear from the decision that we, the decision that I read. I, I, I must have missed something. Um, the non-conforming use was not extended. You, you weren't storing more farm equipment and mulch there. You were changing it to be another non-conforming use, which was automobiles. I mean, I don't argue.
Well, I, I think that part of it is that there were already vehicles. Uh, certainly, I, I certainly understand the question. I think it's a fair question. I think that again, I think the argument that was being made then was that there were vehicles being stored on the property as well, tractors and the like. I think that the argument with respect to vehicles was that it was an extension of a prior non-conforming use. There was already the ability to store vehicles there. I certainly agree that we eliminated perhaps storing loam and mulch, but there were vehicles stored there. So I think that in that respect, it's an extension.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mulville?
Um, uh, thanks, Tom. Uh, nothing uh, really other than just a general overview um, of, it kind of segues into the last uh, um, application with Subaru. Uh, going through the minutes of the decision in um, twenty nineteen, uh, when questioned regarding offloading of vehicles on Everett Street, Attorney Hillier had stated that offloading will not be allowed on Route One. Offloading will be done on site on Everett Street. Now, Peter's property is unique and they do offload on Everett Street, but you see my point? That, you know, I could go through a litany of all the dealerships down there. No offloading of vehicles on Route One. They do it all the time. So I just wanted to say that to just kind of, you know, give a corollary to the Subaru one, but um, I understand fully what they're requesting and I heard Scott's comments, but I'm satisfied. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Riley, please.
Let me make sure that I haven't been, uh, good. I also keep, keep making sure that I wouldn't get, get muted by the machine. Uh, I'm frankly, despite the uh, discussion that we have had here before, remain somewhat confused as to exactly what we're doing, Mr. Omea. I, I'm looking at that prior decision where the finding indicates that the property is zoned for limited manufacturing and will store up to two hundred new vehicles. As I understand it, we allowed you at that point to replace outdoor storage of farming, snow plowing and so forth and so on for the storage of automobiles. It sounds like you're asking for the same relief now and I'm hearing talk about six hundred vehicles. Is, is that the, is that the nature of the change? I mean, what are we talking about here?
Certainly.
We've already, let me, let me ask you this question.
Four hundred.
Have we not already permitted in the earlier decision a change from outdoor storage of farming, snow plowing and other heavy equipment and so forth and so on and mulch and gravel with the outdoor storage of new automobiles? We've already allowed you that, have we not?
Yes, but again, and I think that a, a key component of this is that there were already vehicles allowed to be stored on the property. So I think in that respect, it is an extension of the prior non-conforming use, not necessarily replacing the entirety of the non-conforming use.
And, and to what, to what end are you extending it? To a more car?
To allow for six hundred vehicle. Yes, exactly right.
So, so I'm, I'm getting back to the issue that, that uh, I think Mr. Murphy was raising. If, if that's the nature of what we're doing, extending the prior grant to, from two hundred cars to six hundred cars, how in the world are we supposed to find that storing six hundred cars is not more detrimental to the area than storing two hundred cars? I, I, have you addressed that argument? Don't you have to address that argument?
I've certainly attempted to, uh, and I think again, that the key to it is that vehicle storage was allowed under the prior non-conforming use. And that I don't necessarily think that the prior non-conforming uses were extinguished in that sense with respect to vehicles. It was an extension. And now we're asking for a further extension of the original non-conforming use of storing vehicles, not necessarily an extension from two hundred to six hundred. I think certainly, thinking about that from that perspective, I can certainly see your point. But it's not as if it was no vehicles allowed to be stored, then we switched to vehicles and now we're switching to more vehicles. It's always been vehicles throughout.
I'm sorry, but I, I, I'm not getting what you're talking about. If you've already got vehicles stored there, then what are we changing to? Unless it's more vehicles.
So so can, can I speak?
Go ahead, Peter.
So when we took on this project, we did go before the board and there was a mistake about six hundred cars. It was supposed to be six hundred. It was mentioned in the meeting. We didn't go ahead and push it. Now that the land is cleared, there's almost seven acres of land up there. Now we have the space to do much more than six hundred cars. We have the space to do eight, nine hundred cars. We're looking for six hundred cars for two dealerships. Where before I had the one dealership, I was doing it. We store cars, we just sold one thousand cars to Amazon in all my stores. So Amazon is gonna be storing six, well, I don't know what they're gonna be storing, what they're gonna be taking from us in the uh, Norbert location. But we sold them a thousand cars in all my stores. It's a fleet deal. So they get unloaded up there. They're gonna sit there until they get registered and then they get delivered. So we have that room now, which we didn't have before. So before we asked for the two hundred spaces, now that all the property is cleared, we have almost seven acres of land up there to store the cars. I've been approached by many people from across the street to go back and store dump trucks, to store cement trucks, to do what Foster Brothers does down the street. And ironically, I don't even need a permit for that because they're registered vehicles. And, and Tom, if you talk about a, an eyesight, I think that is a big eyesight when you go by Foster Brothers and look at something like that. These are all brand new vehicles. I don't understand why they're detrimental to the land. They're parked up there. There is no butters. There's nobody that complains about it. So I personally don't understand what the problem is. Even if I asked for a thousand cars, we now have the land to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm, I'm hearing. Go ahead, so if you've got something.
I gather then that the, I think the matter may be clarifying a little bit. And I, I, it's not obviously my purpose to, or function to make the argument necessarily for the applicant. But as I understand now, the now, the argument, or what would seem to me to be the argument that what is being proposed is not more detrimental than what's there, is that what's there in terms of heavy trucks and mulch and so forth. And I drove by the area today. It saw all those things there. I take it that the argument would be that it is less detrimental to look at 600 new cars than to look at what you see there now, a mixture of cars and trucks and gravel and so forth. Is that a fair statement?
I believe that.
And, and again, I have.
Well, I was trying to find out what the argument was. And it sounds to me as though that might be a reasonably legitimate argument to make. But is that what the argument is?
It is certainly. I'm certainly not attempting to hide the ball. And if we miscommunicate in any way, I certainly apologize for it.
Pretty ugly looking place. And I, it might be that storing a bunch of cars is not going to be quite as ugly as it is now. And if that's the argument, then at least, to my mind at least, it's a little more clarified as to what you're doing. I mean, it sounded to me as I was listening to all of this, that you were just saying that, well, since we have more room, we can put in more cars. Well, not necessarily. That really isn't an argument with respect to whether it's more or less detrimental. But at least I understand to the extent now that you're making the argument that the presence of the cars is less detrimental than the trucks and the mulch and the cars, the whole combination. So I thank you for at least clarifying it and presenting what now seems to be the argument as I understand it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Perry, do you have anything to add, sir?
Yeah, I'm a little confused here. The site was allowed to store automobiles. And there's no change in that. It's just the number has changed. And I'm not sure that's a good argument. If they can be stored there, the 200 cars or 600, it's still going to look better than what it does now. And then, like I said, I, you can't say, well, what if it's 500 or 450? I, I think it's a perfect spot for it. And I think it's not going to be a detriment to anyone around. And I think at one time, it was brought up about the ice rink. They wanted better things on the road there. And anyway, and I deal with a lot of car dealerships. As you know, I do a lot of the buildings. But Peter is one of the most outstanding that I've ever met. And again, it's a number. And is 600 the number? Is it 542? It's arbitrary now. The, the use is there. It's a, it's an increase in the vehicles, and it's certainly not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
No, I'm with them. Sorry, I'm just writing something down. I, I don't disagree with either one of you. I agree, I agree with what you, your, more so your explanation that you just said. And Jack's, Jack's was pretty well on too. And Peter, just to go back and explain something to you real quick, in terms of that, my, my point of the incitiveness on whatever the case may have been was more towards the fact that was, I was trying to get an explanation to why the fence hadn't been put up yet. But your explanation of the fence, I thought was excellent. And when you did give your explanation, I did recall how bad a shape the, the lot was in at the time that you bought it. I was up there today, and I do think it looks a thousand times better than what you've, what, what you, what you walked into. And, and again, dwelling on what Jack says, I'm going to go to the audience in a minute, in a minute. But dwelling on what Jack said, and, and, you know, elaborating a little bit on Phil's explanation, a number is a number, you know, and if, and since we've already come to the agreement that that fence is going to be up by April 15, 2021, then you know, whether there's 200 or 600 or 1,000 cars in there, you know, with the fence, it's not going to be bothering anybody, hopefully. But moving on, I'm going to, I'm going to go to the audience, and I'm going to go to, do I have an Alan Boulay? If he would like to be heard?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, anybody who I call on, if you could just state your name, your address, and your, that's it, just your name and address. Thank you. Nicole, do you wish to be heard?
No.
Thank you. Charlie B., do you wish to be heard? Okay, apparently we've lost Charlie. Tom, do you wish to be heard? Okay, we can always come back to Charlie B. and Tom if need be. Okay. Caller five, the mysterious caller five, is that, is caller five associated with this, this case? Caller five, all right. Deep throat, missing again. Okay, why don't I go to Mr. Hajar, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Hajar, 20 Chatham Road. And just to be clear, I am a selectman in town, so don't want to hide the fact. So just to, Mr. Chairman, you brought up the, the point about why hasn't the fence been put up? And then you sort of rationalized what Mr. Cantonese said. But you have to remember, when you approved it for 200, they cleared it for 600, and that's why it took longer. And there was a lot more to take out because he took the time to clear the entire lot, not just to clear for 200, in which case he could have got the fence up. I also want to remind the board that there is, there are now approved open lot storage slash parking regulations that this site is going to be held to. I'm also questioning, since this is an increase of greater than 100, you're not actually going to approve the number, right? Because isn't that, then that go to the planning board as far as their master site approval because of its magnitude, not just the fact that it's 100 cars, but it's 400? And I thought the dividing line was that you folks deal with, like you did with the last hearing with, with Subaru, was under 100, definitely within your jurisdiction. I don't want to get in the middle. I'm just questioning whether the actual number that you would approve, because it's greater than 100 in difference, is really something that you would actually vote as opposed to the use of the property, which I would agree is yours if they're, if they're asking for a change. But if it's something just changing a number from two to 600, isn't that, doesn't that change who this falls under? So I am concerned about the number. I, I know people say, well, if I could put 800, let's just put 800 in there. And I, I think we're missing the entire point of having rules and responsibilities with regards to those that are being asked to live by it. And things are done because they think they can get it, which is fine. But if the process is, let me clear something for the number I want, and then I'll go try to get the number, I, I have a concern about that process. I agree with Mr. Murphy's explanation of the, the change in use. I don't think the decision from the first time that got them to 200 can be the same rationale used to increase it from 200 to 600. But we'll, we'll see. But clearly, the, the plan that was submitted, there's no lighting plan, there's no drainage plan. We know it hasn't been reviewed by the fire department. I have concerns about the, basically the column of cars that are 68 feet long when you put four of them together. So I think it does need a review. So I just want to remind folks that I think there are other parts of town that need to review what's being proposed and before it can officially be blessed.
You know, I'm not sure. I disagree with you on that, David. I, I do, I believe I sat on this case. I don't have the case in front of me. I apologize for that. I do remember that there was some discrepancy in regards to the 600 cars and then the 200 cars. And I'm not going to go further on that because I don't remember exactly what it was. I think there was a misquote on somebody's part, and I don't know which way it went, if I do remember correctly. Regardless of that, I am being. All right, again, I have to ask anybody who's not involved in this hearing, if you could please mute yourself until you're called upon. Thank you. Hold on a second, because I'm getting updated on this as, as I'm speaking. Okay, as far, as far as jurisdiction goes, I'm not sure, David. I'm not, I'm not 100% positive on that. I am being told that there was discussion between the planning board and the other lawyer of Mr. Cantonese's in regards to, in regards to what was going to happen with this case and what they should do or could do, or whatever the comments were. I don't know what the conversation was, was that took place. But the other lawyer on this case, which would be Jim Hilliard, decided to bring it to the zoning board. I don't believe we got, I don't believe we got any comments from the, from the town planner in regards to this hearing. Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure where the, I'm not sure where the jurisdiction lies.
Shouldn't we get then an opinion from our own town council, Mr. Chairman, about whether this is the right venue, or whether the venue should be with the planning board or a combination of both? I'm not exactly sure myself. That's why I'm raising the question. But I'm just trying to understand, based on the understanding between the planning board and the zoning board of appeals with regards to numbers, if it's more than 100 in difference, then it would, it would go to one side. If it's under 100, like your last case, then it goes, it stays with you. You know, I'm not, I know Mr. Hilliard, I'm sure he's not trying to play games. But I, I would ask that our own town council provide advice to both you folks in the planning board to ensure that the right venue is taking place for this project to be reviewed. I mean, it's going to have.
The only issue I have with it is I know it always did fall under our jurisdiction. And I do believe there was discussion to possibly change that. I just don't know if it's been ratified yet or not. So I don't know if it still falls under our jurisdiction or not.
I guess I would cite on the caution then to, to make sure that we're all on the same page before moving, moving forward. I would rather have town council advise both you and the planning board of where this should take place, so that we're not stepping on each other's toes or making a decision that somehow shouldn't have been made or, or should be made. I don't know. But certainly, I'm not saying, again, Mr. Hilliard's playing games. But I'm sure, I'm not sure I would take the applicant's attorney's position as that he's speaking for the town because he surely can't.
Well, I, the only issue I have with that is I've never known Mr. Hilliard to play games, nor do I, would I expect him to waste his time or our time or Mr. Cantonese's time by coming to this board if we didn't have jurisdiction on it. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask Phil, are you looking, are you, are you trying to get a clarification as to where the jurisdiction lies in this?
Well, actually, I am. I'm turning through the zoning bylaw, trying to come up with something. My, my recollection is that there was that issue with respect to numbers of parking spaces, that something less than 100 stayed with the zoning board. And in excess of that, may indeed go to the planning board. And I, I agree that we probably ought not to necessarily be in the business of specify or attempting to specify numbers of vehicles. That basically, we're, we're being asked to change a, a use, which looks like it was already changed. But to me, I, I think we're just talking about a use and not, not about numbers. I do wanted to make the comment that I, goes, I suppose, as a matter of course. But I assume if we allow this request, that all farming, if, if there are still, it looked like to me that there were still some heavy vehicles in the area. I assume that all farming, snow plowing, other heavy vehicles, along with the mulch, gravel and cut wood would be removed from the area. It seems obvious, but we want to make that point in any event. But I have not come across what I wanted to in the bylaw, turning through it very quickly. But my recollection, I do have some recollection about that number of 100, that less than that stayed with us, more than that went, went to the planning board. If I can come up with something that says so while the proceedings are going on, I'll let you know. But that was my recollection.
I'd have to concur with that. I'd have to concur with the fact that we would, we would either approve or disapprove the use that's being requested here. As far as the number goes, to err on the side of caution, as you said, David, I wouldn't mind recommending to Mr. Cantonese go to the planning board to, to verify and finalize a number. But as far as the use.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, that's kind of what I was getting at. I mean, we've already approved this use. We approved this use. We just happen to approve it with, because the plan has 200, there's 200 cars in the plan. Well, there are 600 cars on this plan. This is a new application. I did reread it, and Mr. Almeida is not incorrect. He did, they argued in the alternative. But I mean, I think we've already approved this use. So I don't, I don't particularly see a need to approve this, this, this special permit application. You know, if that's, if it's going to be, if it's going to be a number issue, that you're going to have to argue with someone else about that.
All right, let me ask you this then, just to play devil's advocate. If we grandfathered, if we, in the grandfathered sense, approved the use and approved the, you know, the 200 cars or whatever, if the, if the use has been approved already, and Mr. Cantonese goes to the planning board and asks him to increase the number of cars, what recourse does Mr. Cantonese have if they tell him no?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't think that's our purview.
Okay.
But my understanding, this was a preexisting nonconforming. And if this is preexisting nonconforming, why would I have to go before the planning board?
Again, I don't, I don't know that Mr. Cantonese has to go before the planning board. All I know is that we approved this use for, for the application the last time in 2018 or 19. And, and here he is just coming back, asking for more, another number that has, it's not any, it's, it doesn't fit the bylaw. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to go by the bylaw, I don't think it fits the bylaw to extend from 200 to 600 cars. It doesn't, doesn't meet the requirements of 5.2. I mean, that's, I think I made that clear with my questioning of Mr. Almeida. If, if the planning board is going to give him, if that's the rule, and I don't know that it is, I know there's, there's zoning amendments, and Mr. Hajar could probably speak to that, that are going to be pending for town meeting. I don't know if that's included. And in the zoning.
When I went before the board two years ago, the actual plan was 600 cars, was actually mentioned 600 cars. But when we gave the actual plan, they gave the one for 200 cars. We found this out a few days later from one.
Who did, who did that? You did that?
No, we, my people that represent me did it.
Okay.
We had two plans, the 600 and the 200. And to the time, we just accepted the 200 at that time and had to go back before the board because we did get permission from the town and the building department to remove all six acres of land. So it wasn't like he said it was, like, all of a sudden, he wanted 200, and now kept pushing it. That wasn't the intent at all. The intent at all was to clear the whole seven acres and have 600 parking spots.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I do, Mr. Chair. I do have a recollection of sitting on a hearing that the, the petitioner came forward asking for clarification. I think I did sit on that one. I think at that point, though, I believe, and Mr. Riley or Mr. Mulville may, may know the answer to this, that there was a moratorium. So we didn't, we didn't act on it. Am I?
Exactly.
Am I remembering that correctly?
I think there was, yeah.
Okay.
You're 100% right. I think that's exactly what happened. So the original plan was 600. We had made a mistake.
We had made a mistake and submitted the two hundred plan. The next month, we could not go back because there was the one year auditorium put on it. You're a hundred percent right, and that's how it happened. And now we'd be for the board again, looking for that six hundred permit. We're not trying to. Pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We had a permit to clear seven acres. But it took us not long to do it.
Uh, okay. Peter, Peter, let me uh let me let me speak here, Dave. I don't I, Peter, I don't, no one's no one's thinking you guys are trying to pull a fast one. Don't don't get the wrong impression here. Uh we definitely feel your eyes have always been on the up and up. But uh I I tell you what I'm gonna do. I I'm gonna err on the side of caution. And I am gonna postpone the hearing for two weeks till December fifteenth. Because I do wanna clarify to town council, which would be uh. David DeLuca. Uh in regards to who has the jurisdiction if it's over a hundred cars. I I don't know it off the top of my head. I wanna say it is a planning board issue if it does go over the hundred cars. I know we've already played, we've already approved this use. So I also wanna clarify whether or not Mr. Murphy's right. I think he is. Um if we can do that, then we can, then we can certainly move on. And and you can go on to where you need to be. I'm just, I'm just not positive on it. And and I apologize. I wasn't expecting that.
And if I can.
And I am being, I am being told that our role, I am, go ahead.
I I just wanna say, I just wanna say to Mr. Cantonese, I. I wasn't suggesting anybody was even over anybody's eyes. Matter of fact, I made it a point that knowing Jim Hilliard the way I do. Um he would not. Um but again, because the use had already been approved from your last decision regarding the site. For two hundred, and now you wanna increase it to four hundred. It's it is a numbers, and that's why it has to go before the planning board as a major project. You ask, why do you have to even go there? You do because you're changing the number significantly, and it would fall to them as a major project. And you would have to get a special permit uh through them. They have their own process, just like zoning board has their process, so. You would just deal with.
I tell you, I tell you what, let's 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 move on. Peter, that's what I'm gonna, that's what I'm gonna do. Phil, go ahead, Phil. Go ahead, Phil.
I just wanted, I I have, Mr. Hajar, I think is quite right. And after searching through this thing desperately, I think I have finally come upon the correct provision in the bylaw. And it substantiates what Mr. Hajar is saying. It's under major projects in section three, two, one. And it says in in part. Authorization for a net addition of twenty-five thousand square feet, blah, blah. Or. Parking or storage for a hundred or more vehicles. Will be considered a major project. So I think that is, I think that is the answer. That if it's more than a hundred vehicles, it is a major project. And it follows uh to the planning board.
You already approved it. That you already approved it two years ago without going before the planning board for two hundred cars.
I know, I think the rule changed after that, Peter. That's what I wanted to verify. That's what I wanted to verify.
But if it was approved two years ago. By you. For more than a hundred cars. And it was a pre-existing non-conforming. Why would I have to go before the planning board?
I'll answer that. I do believe. I do believe, yeah, I do, and I do believe the rule changed after that hearing. Uh I don't think it had anything to do with that particular hearing, but I think the rule changed after that hearing. Uh and that's one of the one of the things I wanna get clarified from Mr. Uh. From Mr. DeLuca, Attorney DeLuca. So I tell you what, I'll I I can give you two options. I can uh I can I can offer you the opportunity to withdraw. Or I can offer you the opportunity to postpone for two weeks. So I can get a clarification on the issue and we can finalize.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Brian. Go ahead.
I apologize. I've had network connectivity issues. I've been on and off attempting to be heard. Um I think the two-week postponement sounds like a good idea at this point. Um. If I could just address uh what I think my client's question is. Is how was the board able to hear the application with respect to the two hundred cars? And not for it to be a major project under the bylaw that Mr. Riley just cited? And now it would be a major project. Is it because? That use wasn't allowed and now it is, and we're adjusting the magnitude of that use, or is it? Another reason beyond that?
Well, I'm not gonna give you a definitive answer on that, and the reason is because I don't know. I wa I my guess, and I and I wanna say if my recollection is right. I I wanna say that the rule or the or the by maybe the bylaw or the or the rule changed. After this hearing. I don't remember when it came in. I don't know, I don't remember when the number one hundred came into play. I don't know if it was before Mr. Cantonese's hearing or after Mr. Cantonese's hearing. I wanna say it was after, but I can't say that with definitiveness. That's one of the things I wanna get clarified and why I'm looking for the postponement. Uh but I will ask, I certainly will ask how we could have done it two years ago. And why we can't do it now, or at least make an adjustment to the previous hearing if we're allowed to.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I think I think that's why. Again, and it I'm certainly not gonna beat a dead horse, especially if it's an argument that the board doesn't consider to be valid, but I do think that. I think Mr. Murphy, uh while I was in and out of the hearing, suggested that um the argument that. We had made in the alternative last time. Might have been the argument that the. Uh prior non-conforming use be entirely extinguished, and I think that Mr. Riley's point. Is that some of that non-conforming use with respect to tractors and other vehicles, gravel, et cetera, is still being used. So I I think again, just to go back to the original argument, I think what we're arguing here tonight. Is to extend the non-conforming use with respect to those items and and change it to the six hundred cars. Um but again, certainly, Mr. Chair, I don't mean to. Impose on the board uh when they're sort of seeking to determine their own jurisdiction.
No, it's and and you're not. I mean, you you're doing your job, which I appreciate, but this is what this is what I'm being told, and then we're gonna then we're gonna we're gonna call it a night. Being told that the six hundred cars was never approved or submitted to the zoning board during the hearing. The application didn't list the amount of cars. What happened was is the plan showed two hundred spots. And the board approved the use. There was a member of the audience that asked how many vehicles could be stored up there. And I believe Mr. Hilliard said at least six hundred. Okay, so I think that's where the discrepancy came into play, and I believe it was attempted to be, if I remember, if I remember correctly. It was attempted to be rectified after the fact to no avail. But somehow. The uh the plan was showing the two hundred. Well, I'm being told the two hundred that was recorded, it was a request for relief to be used. Which is exactly what was approved, which goes to exactly what Murph said. The request for relief was for the use of the property, not the number of cars. Okay, that use was approved, that you could use it for past storage. Uh somewhere. And again, I don't recall when this happened. Somewhere it was agreed upon or it was adjudicated. That if it was under a hundred cars, it fell into the zoning board jurisdiction. If it was over a hundred cars, it fell into the planning board jurisdiction. I am ninety-nine percent sure that Phil Riley is absolutely right on that. Uh and it goes back to Murph's point. Uh with the fact that we've already approved the use, so the use is is a done deal. Uh it's just a question of whether or not. We we have the authority to say, okay, yeah, you can put four hundred cars up there, six hundred cars or a thousand cars. I don't believe that falls under our jurisdiction. Uh I'm not positive on that, so this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna postpone the hearing for two weeks. We're gonna come back. Ramondo, what uh? What time do we have, and we're gonna do it prior to the other one? I believe the other one's coming in at seven o'clock on the fifteenth. Alright, that one's coming in at seven o'clock on the fifteenth. Let me see if I can change that, Peter. Uh let's do. As long as it's alright with the board members, if we could do this at six forty-five, does anybody have an objection to that? Okay, Murph, you're good. Uh Jack, you alright with that?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, so let's do six. And Peter, again, it's just so good, it's just so you're not wasting your time either. You know, with all with all due respect, cuz I'm I'm pretty sure I'm right on this. Um.
Mr. Chair, what day?
The chair is uh December Tuesday, December fifteenth, two weeks from tonight. I'm gonna bring, we have a hearing at seven o'clock. I'm gonna bring you guys in at six forty-five. I will have full clarification, so it shouldn't take more than five minutes. I don't think there's an objection to what you wanted. I I'm not even gonna get into that, but. If it's in our hands. I I think everybody's on the same page. If it's not in our hands. We're gonna wash our hands with it and and move on and have you go to the proper venue for it. So let me get clarification within the next. Excuse me?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Phil.
Oh. Just to throw a little more mud into the uh the situation. I just dug up the older zoning bylaw. That was amendment was affected through November eighth of twenty eighteen. And that has the same hundred. Car provision in it. So it sounds as if that might have been what the rule was at the time. Maybe we just missed it. I don't know. Although I will say. The the application. Did not specifically ask for a specific number of vehicles. It simply asked for a change of use. And I would submit that technically, that's all the board did, was to permit. A change of use. There was some discussion. Uh and I now recall that as well. That it was pointed out, I think, by Mr. Hilliard. That it could store two hundred vehicles. But the decision, I don't think technically said. Yeah, you can do that. The decision, I think technically said you can change the use. But it looks as though. The parking of the storage of a hundred or more motor vehicles. Was a major project back then. So maybe we missed it. I don't know. Not sure. But I think the continuance makes sense to get the matter completely clarified.
Yeah. Okay, that I mean, that could be accurate as well. I do remember the discrepancy. There was there was something about two hundred. And then they came in afterwards about the six hundred. So you you know, instead of going tit for tat here. Yeah, now we're kind of, we're kind of wasting everybody's time. Let's um. Let's move on. Let let me clarify with uh Dave DeLuca in the next two weeks. We'll do it at six forty-five on December fifteenth. Um I do have to call for a vote for uh. The continuance, if I could, please.
Move to continue.
Motion for a. Motion for a continuance by Mr. Murphy. Is it seconded?
Second. Uh, second.
Seconded by Mr. Riley. Mr. Cantonese, are you alright with that date, December fifteenth?
Uh.
Okay, appreciate it and thank you. Sorry for the hassle, but just so you know, like uh like everybody says, we just we just tried to get it right. You know what I mean? So, alright, so there's a motion on the floor. It's seconded, a motion to continue to December fifteenth to six forty-five. All those in favor? Mr. Murphy, you first?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mulville?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And the chairs, yes. Okay, we will see you uh December fifteenth, six forty-five P M. Uh, thank you again. Good to see everybody. Hope everybody's healthy and enjoyed your Thanksgiving.
Stay well.
What should you adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. All those, then we have a seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous on that one. Alright, thank you. Have a good evening. I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.